Phone to speak, because I think the microphone's a little better than my laptop. So I think that will work a little bit better. Is that, is that good? Is that view good?
Perfect.
Okay, great.
And we are live.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the, uh, to the, the work study session. I think we're getting a little bit of feedback on the line.
Yeah.
Or so, some kind of noise. If everyone can mute other than me. Hopefully it's not me. Let me try muting myself. Okay, that's good. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. So, uh, welcome to the, the meeting. It is, uh, four oh two. Um, so it's time to take, uh, roll call. Uh, Lynn Davidson.
Here.
Uh, Linda Poe.
Here.
Uh, Mike Manley.
Here.
Uh, Mike Gordon.
Here.
And I, I do not see anyone else but for the sake of completeness, Mark Sims. Uh, Dean Howard. Shelley Herbal. And Suke Knife. Okay, great. Uh, so we do have, uh, five on the line. Uh, so we can proceed with the meeting. Thank you, uh, very much if we can go to our agenda. Um, there is, uh, the first, we'll just start with a brief review of our September twenty-fourth meeting. Um, Nancy, if you could, uh, provide that to us, that would be great.
Good afternoon. This is Nancy Alexander. When we met on September twenty-fourth, we discussed a variety of strategic plans and liked the format of a few of them. And so I put together all of your ideas and sent out a strategic planning draft with the help of Letitia. We have the agency's vision and mission. We have our operating principles. And then came up with four pillars of success that we, um, concluded at the end of the meeting. One was communication and relationships. One was student development. One was organizational culture. And the last was resource management. From those pillars, we had discussions and we'll, I'll help you bring those back around about some ideas of data-driven. Mike Manley mentioned the PSO, so we'll talk, to tie in. And we kind of got into some metricses that we would want to use as measurement. But what we're tasked to do today is to really look at the priorities and any kind of guiding principles that we want to add so that that will help the agency leadership begin to put in specific action steps and how they're going to be measured. So if we have a successful, um, meeting today, we will have some priorities developed under each one of those pillars and we will have some guiding principles. If not, we'll just keep working. This is a work in progress. There's not a deadline or a timeline that, um, we're under. We'd like to get, um, some action steps worked on, but when we're ready. So what I put together for you to help you look at all the twenty-five-plus strategic plans that you were given were sample priorities that, and then I listed where they came from. And then I also, uh, gave you sample guiding principles and the list that they came from. Linda has a question?
Yes, thank you. I do have two questions before we continue. As you mentioned, we had a list of different principles. Could you give us an idea of how you would like us to prioritize that? And how are they? Are we, or is that our task to prioritize them under a specific pillar? And what is the difference between the guiding principles and the guideline principles? Could you define that, please?
Yes. Okay, the, um, let's start with sample priorities. You came up with the four pillars at the last meeting. The pillar of communication and relationships, the pillar of student development, pillar of organizational culture, and the pillar of resource management. Tonight, I would like you to get two or three priorities under each pillar. So I took all of the strategic plans and gave you samples. So that was just to help consolidate the strategic plans. The guiding principles will be things that specify the priorities in a little more detail. For example, if you had a priority under student development that you wanted to work with the schools. Okay? Okay?
Okay, I'm just trying to adjust who exactly is interpreting for me as far as voicing for me. So who I would direct my questions to. Okay, I'm getting used to the in-person with the remote and in-person interpreters. So I apologize. Okay, so the first question I understood. Let me clarify my second question. What is the difference? The difference between the guiding and the guideline principles? So I would like to know the difference between the two, as mentioned. If you can briefly get, give a summary of what the two would mean so that way I can have a schema.
Okay.
To work with.
Both of those should be guiding. It is a typo mistake. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Nancy.
That, that makes sense. And I apologize. So. David, that summarizes where we were with the, um, September twenty-fourth meeting. Were there any other questions from anyone? Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you, Nancy. I don't, I don't see any others. Um, in terms of our next item on our agenda, our explanation of the strategic planning framework, I, I think we've, you've covered a lot of that in response to Linda's question. Um, but, uh, you know, as, as you had mentioned, we've, in our last meeting, we, we coalesced on uh, these, uh, these pillars, so to speak. And tonight's discussion, which we'll move into momentarily under point three, is what are the, the priorities and the, the guiding principles uh, that we're going to have, uh, supporting those pillars? Um, and as, as Nancy had mentioned, uh, you know, she's, she's kind of summarized those twenty-five or so strategic plans from, uh, you know, elsewhere in the state and, and in the West, uh, to kind of distill some of their information, although that's just, you know, a, a guideline. I mean, really, we're open to anything, um, you know, that the board may have. Um, but those were, you know, some examples from those other districts and other schools for the deaf and other schools for the blind. Uh, so from there, uh, you know, I, if we can move on to point three, uh, the suggestions for the priorities under each pillar. Uh, I, I have some samples that I've, you know, or, or some ideas, um, and, and I'm sure that others do as well. So I think if we can start, um, if one person would like to start and then we can go kind of poll each of us, um, to talk about things, although we, we certainly don't have to have a, a serial type of discussion. I think if, um, someone wants to start, others feel free to, uh, to jump in. Uh, does that make sense? Um, is, is there someone that would like to, to go first?
I'll jump in.
Okay, thank you.
Under the first pillar, excellent communication and relationships. We definitely need to have a priority of better communication with school districts. Uh, we have a lot of special ed directors who are not happy with our agency right now. Um, and have, uh, also offered up having an open forum where they would, they would run it and they would lead it to discuss some of their concerns, questions about, um, the agency and how they are interacting with it. That would include possibly ADE case and giving them a format to express their, um, concerns and their questions. And we really need to improve that communication because it's not working right now.
This is Linda. I also feel that in the deaf community, we would like to ask more involvement as far as, you know, how we're communicating to the deaf community and our constituents and who we are working for in the community. And I feel like we need more of a, a forum, like Lynn mentioned. That way we can have a better understanding. Lynn, you mentioned the school districts. Are we asking that as far as teachers only or who are we looking for as stakeholders?
Primarily right now is the, um, special ed directors. Our students throughout ASDB are coming out of our school districts. And right now, a lot more has been put on this special ed directors. And it hasn't been clear how they are supposed to handle all the new changes. So primarily at this point, working with this special ed directors because they basically own all of the kids at ASDB. They are receiving their services through ASDB, but they are still registered now with their homeschool districts. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike.
Understood. Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, and, and Lynn, I, I, this is David. I, I agree. Um, you know, I, I think that we, you know, really need to be more customer service oriented uh, when we deal with districts because we, you know, we are, um, we're not the only choice, uh, right? So, uh, whether we're talking about sending, uh, students to, uh, you know, our, the, the co-ops or whether districts choose to partner with us in the, in the co-op model, uh, or whether they choose to place students at, at one of the campuses. Uh, you know, we're really, you know, an, an option for them. Uh, and, and we should be the, and we should be the best option that, uh, uh, you know, that they have. Um, and, uh, in terms of communicating that, uh, with the, you know, not just the teachers, but the, the special education directors and, and other, um, district personnel is important so they feel comfortable in, you know, in, in working with ASDB to, to educate their students.
This is Linda. David, that's a really good point. And that leads me to think that when we're working with special ed directors, how are we communicating cultural diversity and respect? How are we communicating the deaf history or the needs of our population within that school district? If there isn't a one-size-fits-model, so absolutely, how we're communicating and our best approach in servicing these students and maybe providing information in one place, per se, via that forum. Yes, they do follow IEPs. But I think the perspectives that they hold, what perspective are they coming in with? A diverse perspective, how to work with diverse needs and students? It gets complicated. And I think it, we definitely should put the onus on special directors to educate their districts as well. I think transparency is very important.
Uh, Linda, this, this is David. Um, that, that, you're right, in terms of the, how we, how we communicate that, you know, in terms of, uh, you know, in terms of the, you know, the history and the culture. Um, I think that's done, it is done differently depending on, on the, the model. So at campus, it's done in one way and, and at tournament model, it's done, uh, you know, perhaps a different way. Uh, you, you know, but in, in terms of the, the priority, I think that, that not just building the capacity with the district, but becoming the provider of choice should be, it's something that I would think would be, would be the priority. Um, and then we can, in a moment, talk about guiding principles that, that would support that.
David, this is Nancy. Um, so to help with this process, if you look at the three, um, priorities that you talked about, and we're not going to worry so much about, um, semantics, but it is really, um, ensuring that excellent customer service, building capacity with districts and engaging the community. And some guiding principles that go along with that, that I heard were embracing and valuing diversity. So that, that gives a little more direction to this priority as well as provider of choice. And so that's another guiding principle that helps us more clearly define what we need by, by the, uh, ensuring excellent customer service. So you're on a really good roll here.
Uh, thanks, Nancy. Um, at, at least, um, and I'd like to hear the perspect, perspective of others. But, um, if we're, if we're, you know, merging, uh, into point four, guiding principles, I think that, um, you know, we need to, to have our guiding principle that, you know, under that, that, that item or that priority of becoming a writer of choice and, and building capacity, uh, is that the student needs have to drive decisions and that those decisions have to utilize data-driven practices. At, at least from, from my perspective, again, I'd, I'd like to hear others' thoughts on that.
Linda here. Sorry, I, I missed the previous comment. David, you were talking about, um, data-driven. Um, that should guide decision-making. Um, can you, can you expound upon that and help me understand that a little bit more?
Uh, sure. So part of that, there, there's kind of two guiding principles that would be under that. One is that student needs drive decisions. So, um, you know, all the students have IEPs. Um, so we know that the, the teams have done their, their work in, uh, determining what the child needs to, uh, you know, to, to receive an appropriate education. Um, and, and that should drive the decision, that, you know, the decision-making that, uh, is collectively, uh, uh, made by, uh, both the district and, uh, and ASDB personnel. And again, that could be placement in one of our campuses. Um, it could be utilizing, uh, the services of our co-ops. So, you know, uh, uh, again, e- either way. Um, but the idea is that the student need, uh, you know, would drive that decision as opposed to some other, you know, some other factor. Um, in terms of the data dri, the data-driven practices, um, you know, we have to be able to, um, have some kind of confidence that these, uh, uh, you know, that, that what's selected in those, um, uh, in the student needs or what's selected in IEPs are, are effective. Uh, so, or, or, and that, that have some kind of, um, or support, support in, uh, in education and, and education, um, academics. So, uh, the idea would be, a, a, as an example, if we're going to select, and, and again, we just did, I'll use this as an example because we just did this. Uh, if we're going to select a BREL curriculum, we have to have some sort of information as to what that curriculum could be used for, right? We, we, as we, we went through that exercise just recently, uh, about a year ago. Um, we saw that some work for certain student populations and others are more geared towards other student populations. And we have some, you know, we, we were able to leverage the experience of others um, in selecting, you know, one of those, uh, you know, one of those areas. Uh, same thing with uses of technology. There's a lot of adaptive technology. Um, and we have to be able to, to justify our decisions to, you know, to say, this one is the, the one that's going to be the, I don't, I don't want to say the standard, um, but this is the subset, uh, that we use that we're going to, uh, that we're going to coalesce behind. Um, that we, and those, those decisions can't be made in an arbitrary manner. And, and I think by using those, uh, those guidelines or those guiding principles, we'd be able to better become a, you know, a, a provider of choice because we're able to justify that our educational practices or educational services are supported by, uh, other research and other, um, uh, uh, other educational, um, uh, academics, uh, you know, before, you know, before we deliver them. We're not, we're not arbitrarily picking them, uh, and we're not leaving it on a teacher-by-teacher decision. We have some kind of organizational guidance behind making those decisions.
This is Linda. Well said, David. That's exactly what I mean. Um, and when we're talking about deaf education, there's tons and tons of different resources and information. So I'm wondering how, um, the school district, special education providers, how they're able to filter through this information to make sure that they have, um, correct data-driven information? And that's a concern that I have, but I want to make sure, you know, and, and, and it changes for deaf education. It's constantly changing. There's always newer and better research-driven approaches. Um, so how are we communicating that with the special education directors to ensure that they're following it for their students who are within their districts, who are deaf and hard of hearing, deaf-blind, et cetera?
Uh, this is, you know, my perspective.
And also IEP. And they're, they're who responsible, who, who, they're the responsible team to look at that information, but who's providing the resources for them and communicating that? And, you know, where do they start? Sorry, I'm talking so much. Go ahead.
Okay, it's okay. Uh, th, this is David. Um, and, and I love to get the other, um, your perspective of, of others. But from, from my perspective, it's, that area is an opportunity where, uh, you know, the agency can, can really grow and, and improve. Um, I, I think that, uh, I'm not sure, I had this as another priority. I'm not sure if this is related or not. Um, you know, but I, I, I like the idea of, um, you know, becoming a thought leader in, in the space. Uh, and, you know, the reason for that is, you know, why, uh, we, we look at Texas School for the Blind, for example, and that, and that always comes up as, you know, one of the best schools for the blind in the country. And, and, you know, what, what is that? There's, there's probably several reasons for that. But one of the reasons is that they have a tremendous online resource for parents um, of, of blind visually impaired children. Um, they, they have a lot of, uh, research and guidance, uh, for parents um, into, into how, you know, the, the blind education and visually impaired education, um, you know, should be conducted, some of the best practices. Uh, and, and they have, they've kind of compiled that and they have it accessible to, to everyone. And I think that's, that's why they're a big resource i- in, in the community. Uh, because it's, you know, they've put that work in and they've been able to communicate that, um, online. So it's, it's open to everyone. You don't have to call them. You don't have to, uh, you know, pay to get consulting, you know, consulting services or something like that. It, it's there for you to, to access. And, and I think that a lot of people do. Um, and I'd, I'd like to see, again, I'm not sure that this is a, related to the party we're just talking about. Um, but the idea that we can put some of this work online or make it access, otherwise accessible to people, uh, it, it would be helpful in not just improving the, the stature of the agency, but enable us to demonstrate the, the, I'd say levels, a, a level of support uh, of what the agency, uh, you know, can do and the resources that it, uh, that it, that it can marshal. Uh, but you're right. I, I think now currently it's, there's cer, certainly an opportunity to better communicate, um, some of these practices to, to districts. Um, although I, again, I'd like to hear, uh, the input of others.
And Linda, you asked about, you know, districts knowing, um, new methods, new approaches, um, new research being done into, um, deaf education. A lot of what they're going to look at, you know, we rely on this, if they're placed in one of our brick and mortars, that those teachers, staff, administrators have that knowledge and background. What's going to happen is districts are going to look at test results because those are all going back to their home high schools now. And that's going to reflect on the letter grade that they receive from the state as a school. So they're going to be a lot more focused on how those students are, are performing academically because it's going to affect how they look as a special ed department in their school. It's not going to reflect on PDSD as much or ASDB, but it will reflect on their home schools. That makes sense. So I know there's going to be, I've heard it from a number of special ed directors and they're, they're really concerned and they're really going to be paying attention and wondering if this is the best choice? If this is where the kids are really receiving the, the academic rigor that they, that they're looking for, for their kids?
Yeah, and, and Lynn, that's a, a great point that, you know, because the, those results are going to be owned by the districts, um, you know, with the, with the new agreements that have been put into place. Um, you know, we're, we're accountable to those districts and we need to, you know, be sure that we're, we're doing, uh, you know, the best that we can to, to educate their students. Um, you know, and, you, you know, certainly, um, when we, you know, when, when we look at that, that kind of new responsibility, that new avenue of accountability, uh, you know, we have to, I mean, I think that's part of what, why we're doing the strategic planning is to, um, to make sure that we're in a, a, a better position to, to have that accountability.
This is Mike.
This is Linda. Um, there's just one small point I wanted to make here. I do realize in the past, Schools for the Deaf in general across the country were looked upon as a dumping ground. A dumping ground. Um, did I freeze?
Yeah.
Dumping ground. And, um, students who were deaf and hard of hearing that stayed in the school districts who were falling behind and failing were sent away to the Schools for the Deaf. Okay? So that's one thing that we do need to recognize historically that has happened. Um, and we need to make sure that we are protecting the schools as appropriate and that we are still providing the appropriate education. And education, be an outstanding institution for students who are deaf and hard of hearing and not just be a place that's considered a dumping ground. If, if you get to my point, I just wanted to add that to the conversation because it is something that we have seen in the past and it was, it was a horrible problem that, um, really brought a lot of schools to closure because districts were deflecting responsibilities and putting it on the Schools for the Deaf. And that's what I'm talking about. Where is the school district's responsibility in that? And that's my thoughts. Um, just wanted to share that perspective.
This is Mike, or Mike Manley?
Go ahead, Michael.
I'm looking over the guiding principles. It, certain, it's an interesting juxtaposition between what might be considered, student services or what might be considered, uh, a staff perspective. Um, I mean, obviously, looking just under the excellent communication and relationship. Number two is making decisions based on the best interest of students. I mean, that's a kind of a no-brainer, I would hope. But, uh, at the same time, uh, you know, maybe not. But quite a few of these, you know, when you talk about embrace and value diversity, maintain a safe and secure environment, provide welcoming and inclusive environment, promote and support personal health and well-being, build resilience and capacity to persevere. I guess in, in this case, when we're looking at these as, as examples, but maybe also as, as templates, are they, are we talking about that for the students to be able to develop those, those traits and, uh, encouraging those things? Are we talking about the staff to be able to follow those precepts? And, uh, so, or maybe both? Or, and if so, how, uh, you know, how does that, um, how's that translated? Because, you know, I think to some degree, as- some degree, as we're talking about the competitive nature and being a school of choice and, uh, informed choice, et cetera, you know, being able to have what we feel are, our teachers that can, uh, can truly walk that talk, uh, will be the, to some degree, one of the defining characteristics as to, you know, the strengths of, of, and the interests of, of choosing ASDB or primarily, I think I'm talking about the co-ops right now, but, and again, my perspective is blindness. So it's, it's a much smaller sample, uh, in, in, uh, in this school. Uh, but, you know, our, if, to me, that's, those are, if we apply these towards guiding principles for teachers, I think that's a, a pretty important aspect, an emphasis that, that we might want to embrace. Mike?
This is Mike Manley. I just wanted to, uh, uh, pile on on, uh, Lynn and Linda's comments about, uh, the accountability and making sure that the perception of a dumping ground dies quickly and doesn't continue down the future. So, um, I think Lynn is spot on that, um, that sort of transparent communication with our primary stakeholders, which are the LEAs that feed us children, um, should be taken quite seriously. And if we could reach out to do that and, um, kind of with Linda's point that these LEAs do have a stake in, in the future of these kids and they, they're in their communities. That's where their families live. So, you know, um, it's a good thing that their districts are going to be concerned about their academic standing and have some accountability for that. So if, um, as that continues, those, uh, that academic rigor is going to continue to be a need for focus. Um, so I would, I would think that that would be a, a great first place for communication would be to focus on our LEAs that give us our kids to make sure that they know exactly what they're getting into with ASDB and how, how their needs are being met and go down that road. But I just wanted to, uh, pile on that. I think Linda and Lynn are on the right path there with what probably needs to happen sooner than later for, for us to make sure that we're on the right foot moving forward with our stakeholders.
Uh, thanks, Mike. And I, I certainly agree. I mean, I, I think when we look at, district looks at placing a student, um, you know, either at the, at the campus or, or, um, you know, looks at, at getting services to a co-op. I mean, you know, that's really, should be based on student educational need and not, you know, it shouldn't be viewed as, you know, we're, we're shipping the student out. I mean, that, you're right, the student's part of that, that community and, and, uh, you know, is, is valued in that community and, and we need to provide a, uh, you know, at, at least as good, if not better education than, you know, they would receive in their, uh, in their homeschool district, uh, if they're being placed on, on campus. And again, that decision not to be placed on campus is really, uh, you know, it, it is that campus model, you know, that we have at PDSD or ASD for, as an example, um, that's going to provide, uh, you know, certainly quite a bit of, of benefits over, uh, for certain students and students that need it, um, over their, their home district or their, their homeschool. Uh, but we need to make sure the district is comfortable in, in, in setting the child there if that's, again, in the, in the child's best interest. Um, but Mike, in terms of the, uh, Mike Gordon, in terms of the, uh, discussions of the priorities, I, I think what you had mentioned does relate to, uh, you know, primarily to staff. I think that's, uh, you know, that, that's certainly important, although you can extend some of those principles to, to, to students. Um, but when we look at, you know, other, the other pillars, I mean, you, you're right that some things that we do to enhance relationships, you know, also help with student development. I mean, so that there is going to be, you know, some, some, some side effects of that, I, I think. Um, you know, as an example, I, I had another, um, you know, outstanding student development under that pillar of trying to close some of the educational gaps that we have, um, with some of our students, um, with guiding principle of, uh, you know, of equity and rigorous instruction. You know, those achieving that would, would certainly help our communication and relationships. Um, but I think that under, you know, if we're orienting ourselves, uh, they're probably more, more squarely under the, the student development pillar than, uh, than otherwise. If we're, we're looking at that other student development pillar, are there other, other priorities that any of the board members have that they want to discuss? Okay. Um, one of those that I had in terms of priorities of student development is the, sorry, uh, is proficiency in, in language. And, you know, and again, we're looking at the agency here, not just the, um, you know, K through, through, through 12. We're really looking at the whole agency, which covers, uh, zero to three early intervention, um, and, and what we now call an early learning program. So, you know, a, a key priority for me, um, is, is getting children, especially young children, you know, proficient in, uh, you know, language, um, and, and at, at an early age. I know that's, that's an issue for many of our students. Um, and, uh, you know, they, they, they need to acquire language. So, you know, to me, that's another, uh, early childhood proficiency, proficiency in language, um, for, in early childhood and early learning, uh, I, I think should be a, 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 a primary, uh, priority for, for us under that pillar, uh, with a, a guideline principle of, of access to instruction and, and technology, uh, where it's need to, where technology is, is needed to support those goals, uh, but also the access to, to the appropriate instruction.
This is Lynn. I agree. We've got to get that language in early. Um, put a lot of emphasis in that area, but we also need to keep up the rigor of our education, um, as the students progress and not water it down. Um, really look at the standards and, and make sure that our curriculum is matching that. Next.
This is Linda. Okay. I think my video froze for a second. All right. So I absolutely support what you're saying, David, as far as starting early. Early education is vital. Zero to three, it's pivotal for language acquisition in any children, in any child. And I think that if we remind ourselves that 90% of deaf children come from hearing families and they come into our program at zero to three, the earliest education, their exposure to communication and language started at home, not necessarily at ASDB. And if the school districts do not have the resources, how do we approach that? And are school districts capable and qualified in teaching a multitude of communication modes, ASL? If we have a child who's learning language, we're not sure if they're going to be successful in spoken language or ASL. Are they being exposed to both modes of communication? And so I wonder if we are looking at language acquisition, what type of language? Is it visual? Any child can learn the visual language. So I feel that, how are we explaining the resources to parents if they're choosing to speak with their child? And, and we, we have programs out there, for example, baby Einstein books that teach sign language to hearing children, but yet we, we remove that option for our deaf children. It's conflicting for me. And I feel like if we are the experts in that field, we should be providing these resources to our families. And so how do we teach our parents ASL? How do we explain this to the school districts? How, how do we start with language first? And it doesn't mean just the spoken language. So that's, that's our task. I think we have to be able to prioritize any type of language and communication mode. And I don't want to set our children up for failure. So that's a concern of mine. And I feel that the kids, um, again, if we're looking at 90% of deaf children are born to hearing parents, we have our work cut out. And so, yeah, wow.
Uh, thank you, Linda. No, I, I certainly agree. I think when I use the term proficiency in language, it's, it encompasses both, um, you know, ASL, for example, um, and spoken language. Um, so it's, it's not exclusive to, to one or the other. Um, I think what's, you know, important is that the, you know, the child develops.
Absolutely.
Yeah, some, some language. Um, and, and that's really, you know, again, I think parents are the primary driver of that choice. Um, you know, but we are responsible for, uh, you know, providing the resources to, um, to learn that. I, I do know even currently there are, um, we do run programs that, that teach parents ASL, uh, parents that don't, that don't, uh, speak ASL, uh, to, to learn it. Um, and I, I think that, you know, if we were able to expand that to other places, um, and other, uh, other locations, that I think that certainly would be helpful for parents that, um, you know, choose to, to have their, their children learn ASL. And that certainly would be helpful. Uh, in, in terms of the, you know, how we're, how we're delivering those, that language acquisition service, so to speak, uh, you know, we have early intervention, uh, in that zero to three area. Um, and, and we have, you know, a few years ago, we've, uh, combined our early intervention with our preschool program. Now it's, it's ELP. And, you know, I think we're trying to, to kind of hold on to parents. I think we did that because there was a, you know, we had an issue with parents kind of getting, getting, uh, and not really staying connected with the agency. So they turned three and then the agency would leave and they'd be left to their homeschool districts. And we're able to, to bridge that gap better by having, um, you know, one director, uh, for both of those programs and we're able to stay in contact with those families, uh, it, through that transition, which is, I mean, I, I lived through that transition and it wasn't, it wasn't perfect. I mean, um, but I, I think that by having, uh, you know, that, by operating on that, that level, we're, we're, or on that, in that area of having the, the, the continuous contact with, uh, our ELP, uh, staff, um, we're able to help guide those parents to make better choices. Um, and we're still able to work with those school districts to get those students, uh, into a preschool program that works for them. And, you know, as you know, we have, you know, we, we provide that. And I think, um, it's, it's great. We have options for, uh, children that, that do use spoken language. Um, and they, that's housed at PDSD. Um, it's also housed now. We, we have a new contract with a, a third-party provider in Maricopa County, uh, that can do that. I'd like, I would love to see more of that. Um, you know, the, that public-private partnership, if we can have that in other areas, other, other locations. Um, but I know that we have the staff to do that as well, uh, and to deliver those, those services remotely for, for acquiring both, you know, both spoken language and, uh, and, and ASL. But, you know, for me, you know, if that, I really think that should be one of our, you know, top two or three of our choosing priorities, um, that, that really should, for student development. Uh, I, I think that should be at least one of our top two or three, um, priorities to then make sure that we devote the resources we need to the ELP program, uh, to get, uh, our, our children to acquire language that they, we, we set them up for success later, um, in, in their, uh, again, whether they come to our campuses or whether they stay, uh, in, in their homeschools, uh, so that they, they acquire language earlier and they're not lagging behind their peers, which is, which is so often the, the case, unfortunately.
And Linda, that, that our birth to three, it used to be our birth to three program, parent-in-law program. Those staff go into the homes and work with the parents. The school districts do not have anything, they don't touch the kids until they're three years old. At age three, that's why we wanted to blend this, to make a better transition. And then the school district is involved, um, in services and how, how they're provided, where they're provided, whether it be a preschool at their homeschool with other services coming in to work with those children, or if it's on one of the campuses in their preschool programs. But birth to three is still, even though we put them together, is still separate and the school district doesn't become involved till age three.
David, this is Nancy. And that's my point. Like you said, so from three and on, um, the district is involved. So from birth to three, how does that work? How do we collaborate with the school districts for students who don't have services until they start with the district at three?
Um, for, well, for zero to three, we, we don't work with the school districts a- at all because they're, they're, they're just not involved. Um, the early intervention program throughout the state is, is administered by the agency. I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Linda, you were speaking? Right. So, so they have, they have no involvement, um, in that zero to three area.
That's Eddie. Yes. Okay. I'm clear now. Thank you. Yeah. I think Mike Manley, Mike Manley did, uh, explain a little bit more about that. I'm not very familiar with that, with the school districts responsibility in zero to three, if they had any. Mike Manley?
Sure. This is Mike. Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting my machine. Um, so federally speaking, there's IDEA encompasses several aspects. IDEA Part C is actually governed by DES. So birth to three, um, is outside of the scope of, at the education realm. Uh, it's early intervention services. Um, their governing body is, like I said, DES. That doesn't change until age three. So, uh, at age three or two, two years, 10 months, districts can start to take a look at the, um, service plans that those top infants and toddlers had and transition them into a school-age IEP. Um, so, uh, so for example, preschools, uh, basically three and four-year-olds, um, with an IEP. But before that, it's a separate funding stream with separate, uh, governmental regulators for the state. Um, so ASDB is a little unique in that they group those two, uh, groups together, but that's, that's how the fiscal piece goes and the accountability piece goes. So they're both, they're both under IDEA. Well, IDEA B is three to 22 in Arizona, and then IDEA C is, is infants and toddlers. So I know that like, uh, there's a state director of IDEA Part C and a state director of IDEA Part B, and they, they work for different state agencies, but we do meet and talk. So there is some collaboration there, um, but they are from different systems. And statewide, whether a child is, um, uh, eligible for participation in, in ASDB or not, if they have a different disability, uh, that would qualify them for an IEP. It's similar across the state where there's that handoff between, um, basically the ESIP, the early intervention folks and the IEP team, which will hopefully happen before age three, which is the requirement. So that's, that's how that piece is structured. And ASDB just, uh, handles it a bit differently in that, um, we, uh, as an institution, we have, uh, birth through 22.
And currently our, um, service coordinators who work with our birth to three families, they guide the parents to get them to their school district, to get those kids registered when they're two years, 10 months, start the process to set up an IEP meeting. I've sat in on many of those transition meetings and decide where services would best be provided. So that's really an important part of what our service coordinators are doing with the families that they're working with.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Linda, our, this is David, our, our ability to kind of have some kind of, I don't want to call it a bridge service, but, uh, to have some contact with the parent after age three, um, you know, for a few months, I think it's helpful, um, to make sure that they're guided in the, in the right place and that transition happens effectively. Uh, you know, there are plenty of districts. You know, there are plenty of districts that run their own programs, you know, for blind children and deaf children. And that might be, you know, what that student needs. And we can still make sure that they're getting the services that they need in their home district. But that's not every child. And, you know, we're able, by having that, by being able to provide some kind of guidance post-three to three and a quarter, or three and a half, you know, we'd be able to steer that student in the right direction to a program that's going to suit their needs. Again, it's Arizona. We, you know, parent choice is really a guiding principle for, you know, all of the educational system. So, you know, we can't compel a child to go from one place to another. But, you know, we can give parents the information they need to make a decision that's right for them and their family. So, you know, in terms of that, you know, the proficiency in language, and maybe perhaps related is proficiency in expanded common core, which is, you know, kind of a related curriculum. And at least from my perspective, our guiding principle there is to make sure that there's access to instruction, appropriate instruction, and access to appropriate technology. You know, to me, those are the two key aspects in that, to support that pillar.
David, this is Nancy Alexander. I have summaries for you for sample priorities that I can do for the first two, if you'd like me to now, or I can wait until the end and summarize all four. Whatever would work best for you.
Maybe we'll wait till the end and summarize that. Unless, I mean, is there any more discussion on the outstanding student development pillar that others have, you know, in terms of priorities, in terms of what they'd like to see, you know, listed as those two or three priorities?
We've addressed-
This is Linda.
Go ahead.
So it says, "to develop creative thinking skills." Do you see that statement? Where it says, "Develop the creative thinking skills." "Critical and relative..." The interpreter is missing the exact wording that you're looking at.
It's under the guiding principles. She pointed, Linda pointed out, "Develop critical and creative thinking skills." And as you guys have been talking about these, I've got all the notes down that we will then put into wording for you to take a look at, to make sure we were able to capture all of the guiding principles. But I did include that, "Develop critical and creative thinking skills," as we look at ways that we're going to have a priority of outstanding, a pillar of outstanding student development with a priority in early learning, proficiency in language, a priority of making sure that we have the academic accountability to close that achievement gap and to keep the rigor that's standard-based. So those were kind of the three priorities that came up under that area, along with then the guiding principles that you have been sharing with us.
And this is Lynn. We also need to keep in mind, consider the social-emotional aspect that our kids struggle in. They need that social-emotional support because they don't get it in the same way hearing kids do. So I think we need to keep that as a priority as well.
This is Linda. I agree.
I would agree as well, Lynn. Okay, if we can move on to the third pillar of superb organizational culture, are there any suggestions for priorities under this pillar? From my perspective, you know, one of our priorities, I mean, I have two. And one of them is modeling servant leadership. I mean, I think that our administration should be, you know, focused on helping, and, well, it should be, and, you know, and is today, but should continue to be focused on helping the, you know, the staff serve our children. And that really should be the focal point or the stance of leadership is to serve the staff. I mean, to me, that's, I think that's an effective model, so that leadership can work together to accomplish these things. You know, one of the guiding principles there is really removing obstacles for, you know, for staff to accomplish what they need to accomplish. I also wanted to advance a climate of continuous improvement. You know, the idea that, you know, there's probably always room for improvement. We should always be doing something to improve the way we're doing things, both large and small. So we should be able to have a priority of building some sort of continuous improvement, you know, feedback, or into the processes that we have in the agency. You know, and that can be, that takes a variety of forms. I mean, one way is to look at things that go wrong and perform some sort of, you know, either root cause analysis, where we're taking a look at, you know, what led to that problem. I don't want to, you know, implement Six Sigma or anything like that. But, you know, if we can look at, if we have an escape, so to speak, where in the process did it go wrong? Not necessarily to point blame at one person or another, but to see where the process could be improved.
I think, this is Lynn. I think it's important to keep professional development going, to make sure that all staff get professional development, to increase skills in Deaf Ed, Vision, and to also what's going on in general education, where their standards are, some of the strategies they may be using that would be effective with our brick-and-mortar schools, to kind of bring them up into the 21st century and have them competitive with some of the things that are happening. And, you know, we have to go through professional development all the time. And whether it's, I'm the only Deaf Ed teacher, and none of it's ever related to me, but I always learn something from it that I can apply. And I think that's something we need to really keep a focus on that. And I don't know if it would be included here, and I know we've been working on it for a few years, a number of years, is to develop leadership within and look for leadership without, so that we can create a leadership team to be able to fall back on if anybody leaves.
Lynn, that's a great, a great point, you know, in a couple of areas. I mean, you know, one, professional development is, you know, we value our teachers and we value our staff, and we should be able to support them in improving the way that they do their jobs and keeping up with advancements in, you know, in the field. You know, in terms of, you know, developing homegrown leaders, I think that's important, too. I mean, in other organizations I've been involved with, they always try to say, you have to find your prospective replacement, right? You have to mentor a couple of people, you know, to be able to develop their skills and improve their skills. So, you know, when it's time for you to advance, you know, you can look behind you and say, "Well, I have a couple of people here, or three people, that have been observing and have been approving, and that know about this position, and we'll be able to be successful there."
This is Linda. So thinking to what you're saying, David, and also with what Lynn has mentioned, if we're choosing teachers who are motivated or driven for deaf education or visually impaired students, we have to also consider their backgrounds. Is this individual deaf? Is this individual blind? What experience do they have, not just academically? So that way, we can bring in more people from our communities to be role models for our students. And I oftentimes do see teachers who may be deaf, but are plateaued. They're not given opportunities to move up in their careers because, let's say, a hearing person may have obtained that position. And so how do we, how do we work collaboratively with teachers that come from that marginalized background? And how do we support our unique community? And I feel teachers for the deaf, at schools for the deaf, should we have more deaf teachers that work directly with these students? And how many can we, do we see in this public school setting? How do we support our school districts to identify leaders within our deaf and our blind communities? That way, they have more of a commitment and attachment to our communities and to our students. So I think if we're looking at inclusivity, we have to start with the people that we hire and the partnerships that we create within our stakeholders in our communities. It's completely different to have someone come in with academic expertise, but not that actual life experience. And I'm sure that could be said for the blind community as well. If we're looking at people from diverse backgrounds, how are we looking at inclusivity? Within their field, how can we promote the experts, teaching the experts? I don't know, I might be preaching to the choir, but I'm putting out my thoughts out here, and these are just my ideas.
This is Mike, Mike Gordon. Linda, you are spot on.
Who wants to become the next president, right? Like, let's look at, let's look at if the next superintendent is deaf or blind. That's who we are looking for, right? Because that's who's going to lead our school, our agency, because that's what we do. That's who we are. And so I'll just stop rambling now.
Yes, good point, Linda. What you're saying is so pertinent to the importance of hiring staff that understand sensory deprivation, understand blindness. I don't know how many blind staff there are in ASDB out of our 600 employees, but I know it's an important aspect of role modeling and training, and, again, walking that talk. And I'm sure it's the same in deafness, and very important. You know, we have a different approach at Savvy in that we do non-visual training. And when our staff, we hire new staff, they spend at least the first couple of weeks, but as much as 400 hours in their first year, in under sleep shade and non-visual training and immersion. So it's an important aspect of what we do. And I think it's an important aspect of learning rehabilitation in a real setting from folks that know how to teach it. So I think that's very good, Linda. Not something that's really discussed very often, either, in regard to that specifically.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda, this is David. I think you're right. You know, I know when we did our last superintendent search, we had, I believe, six finalists. And five of them were, had either visual impairments, or were deaf, or were hard of hearing. So, you know, when you look at education, and all of them, you know, were highly qualified. They were principals at schools for the deaf, and schools for the blind, or former superintendents at other districts, you know, in schools for the deaf. So, you know, again, when we look in education, that's, you know, we, in deaf education especially, you know, we happen to find, you know, very often that there are deaf individuals in the field. And I know we have, you know, quite a number at the agency. But I think maybe what you're asking is, you know, how can we develop them so that, you know, when leadership positions do arise, that they're in a good position to, you know, to be competitive for those positions when they, you know, when they do arise? Are there any other discussions about the organizational culture? I know we have a couple of priorities that I have proposed. Lynn proposed a very good one. Are there any other discussions on that? No? Okay. Hearing that, if we can go on to effective resource management, that was our last pillar. If we have any discussion on different priorities for that pillar? One of the priorities that, you know, I have is to optimize human resources and as a guiding principle, to focus on efficiency and lean management. I think when we look at our, you know, if we look at our, the business reports that we get every meeting, I think we're running at about 12% in terms of overhead or administrative costs. And that, you know, I think there's probably opportunity there to improve some on that. I'd like to be able to say that we, you know, that we can increase the amount of dollars that we spend at the agency to direct student service and direct student programs and, you know, transportation, you know, to and from those programs. So I think there might be some opportunity there. And that's, you know, again, making the management system, you know, a bit more lean, a bit more efficient than it is today. I don't know that I necessarily have a number in mind, but I think where we are is maybe a bit much. Is there any other suggestions on that in terms of, you know, our ability to optimize the human resources? Without hearing any, the other priority that I had in my notes were the, to align the human capital and resources. So a guiding principle there would be to encourage effective facility management. I know, you know, our use of the Tucson campus has changed over the last few years. And, you know, I think we, you know, to be good stewards of that facility, you know, we may have to make some changes as to how we use the campus, either, again, and these are things that we've talked about in the past, you know, either leasing to outside groups, or repurposing buildings for different uses. You know, I'm perfectly happy to repurpose groups and start building and start to program there, so that we can serve more children or serve the children we have with deeper, you know, deeper services. But, you know, at the same point, I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're using the campus, that we're using all the campus. all the campus, and we're using it effectively. And I know now, we talked, again, a few years ago about the dorms and their use, and the footprint of the dorms has decreased with COVID. It is, you know, and my understanding is that we, we have some space, some extra space to provide some distance. So, that's, that's a good thing, that we happen to have that now for COVID. But at some point in the future, you know, when the, that, that threat to the agency is reduced, I'd like to be able to, you know, kind of go back to the more compact, the management of the, especially of the Tucson campus. And, you know, to the extent there's, there's management at the PDSD campus and that we can effectively use those resources, I'm certainly open to that, too. I think the campus there is, you know, it's used differently, and it's a, it's in a, you know, it's a day school, it's not, not a residential school. So, or it's not, at least partially a residential school like the Tucson campus. Oh, Pinda?
So, my thoughts on what you mentioned, David, and you're right, having the two different campuses. And I'm a product of a school for the deaf and a residential program. And I grew up at a school for the deaf, even though my parents are deaf. And yes, the language exposure was rich there. But I think the social emotional development that I acquired at a school for the deaf was critical. And we have to remember that, especially with our population of students and the activities that are promoted at Schools for the Deaf. They're able to participate in clubs after school because they live in dorms, and how we collaborate with school districts because of the dorm opportunity. And their activities that are so rich within our communities that we have to, you know, historically remember that this is how our students relate. And we're talking about the entire state of Arizona. So, what opportunities are we able to give to other students that live in remote areas if they did not have the chance to come to the school for the deaf and/or blind? And then, I think, the more we connect our, our population with our school districts and really enhance our, the quality of life for school, for the children at the Schools for the Deaf. And what would it look like if we changed that and we no longer provided a residential program? Deaf education would change, and it would be an abrupt change. And I understand being cost-effective and, but yet maintaining growth. And I see the downside to both options. And if we do lease out to an outside organization, could that lend itself an opportunity to keep the dorms because we are leasing other properties? And I go back to the social emotional development of our students. And things that they don't find at home, unfortunately, it's, yeah.
That's what I see. Oh, thank you, Linda. Yeah. And I do, I, I mean, I should be clear, I'm not saying that this is a guiding principle of producing or usage of the dorms as a deliberate measure. You know, if there are fewer children that, and parents that choose to send their kids there, that's one thing. I know the, I'm not sure if you were there for that visit we did a couple of years ago, when they implemented the Sentinel Zone, you know, area where the, where the children go, where the residential students go after school. And that's a, I mean, that's great. I mean, that's a, the Sentinel Zone is really an amazing place, I think. And they have, you know, the ability to engage in different, you know, activities there. And also, if you looked at the, when we did the dorm tours, the students were able to live collectively. They do their own laundry, they cook their own meals, they decide what meals amongst themselves that they're going to cook. They go and obtain that food, you know, locally, and then they come back and they, they cook and then they clean up. And that's, you know, that's all extra, that's all expanded common core, you know, things, especially for deaf, or for, I'm sorry, for blind children. Those are all expanded common core life skills that we just, you know, we don't, and outside of residential program, you don't have, you know, it's hard to get time to do that, right? So, because, you know, we have all of these extra hours in the day to be able to learn those life skills. And that's, you know, that's, you know, to me, I think that's really important for the students who choose to come to the residential campus. Certainly, that's not the right choice for every child, of course. But what I mean by, you know, effective facility management is that we, you know, we're using the campus that we have and the resources that we have on campus effectively. That I don't want to have, you know, empty buildings. I want to be able to use them. And whether that's used by a third party, that's, that's one thing. We'd have to carefully select who we'd, you know, lease to, et cetera, and what uses they'd have. Or if we repurpose them to, you know, to provide other services or enhanced services, you know, that's another option, too. I know, I think one of the buildings we have in the Tucson campus was used for some technical education classes. And now, I know, my understanding is that many of the students there, you know, go off campus for that now. If we can, you know, repurpose that, that building for some other use that's productive, you know, I'd want to, I'd want to hear about that. And in terms of the, you know, even expanding the resources, we've talked about programs, you know, having programs, again, you know, the, the population of Arizona is, you know, centered in Maricopa County. There's also significant population down in Pima, and then some near Flagstaff. If there's, and then there's a lot, a lot of rural communities, and, and it's a challenge to reach those rural communities, but we need to, we need to do it. If the, if the answer is that we need to have either lease, you know, some other space somewhere else, and run, you know, similar to what we do, you know, up, up north, there's a couple of places up north where we, we do that, and bring children to those programs. If we need to expand something like that, or try something new, that's, that's another, you know, way to, to align our, you know, our human and our capital resources and be able to deliver services in locations that aren't our main campuses and outside Maricopa and Pima. But we need to be able to, again, marshal the human resources to go, to go do it, and marshal the, the capital to go do it. Are there, are there any other, I think, Linda, you tried to say something?
Yes. It says, "Attract and retain qualified personnel." Is that okay? Right?
Yeah.
Yes. So, I'm looking at that, and I think that's important, that we are bringing, I want to speak to that, that we're bringing qualified teachers of the deaf and qualified teachers of the blind and visually impaired, and that we're retaining them. So, how are we doing that? And how do we do that? You know, oftentimes, they come looking for training, and they earn their degree, and then they leave. They do their internships, and then they leave. So, I think it's important that, you know, we're, we're bringing in those qualified personnel and staff, and we're keeping them here. And that throughout the cooperatives as well. I wanted to add that as well.
Sure. And, and I certainly agree with that. I mean, you know, part of that is, under the, you know, the organizational culture, we want to have a culture that, you know, where staff want to work. We want to have a culture that supports staff in their professional development, so they can grow professionally. Part of that is, you know, resource management in terms of making sure that we can pay, you know, competitive, you know, compensation for, you know, the teachers and the other staff. And there's, you know, several hundred teachers, and there's hundreds of other staff. So, we want to make sure that in every job classification, we're able to offer a competitive package, you know, relative to, you know, local school districts, you know, that may be competitors for those, you know, for those, for those folks. And in terms of, you know, our resource management, you know, again, aligning that, or, or being more efficient, I mean, we hopefully can get, you know, more, you know, more money directed towards direct student service, I hope, as part of those efforts, to increase efficiency so that we can, you know, use the money that we have if we, if we don't have any increase in our, in our budget. And again, I don't know what, if Prop 208 exactly passed or not, or what the implication of that is for the agency. I don't know yet. But if we were to say that our budget is fixed, you know, how can we, how can we get more, you know, more services from that? How can we deliver more services with that same amount of money to the children? I think that's, that's, to me, is, is one of our, you know, our challenges.
Linda, speaking. I know there are different challenges, but we also, you know, we have our challenges, and we also can have our goals and things that we want to see happen. And that's where we use our creativity to solve these challenges, to overcome these barriers. And that's something that I'd like to see happen. That's my, my thoughts. So, is that clear? I know this is a strategic plan, so we have to think outside the box. And I know with coronavirus, when that impacted the closure, we had to think outside of the box of how we're providing education. And we're still moving forward with our planning process. You know, we're coming up with the principles, we're being creative with how we're going to address some of these barriers, and we need to continue to do so.
No, I certainly agree, Linda. And I think that's our, you know, kind of after today's meeting, you know, Nancy and I and Annette will meet and kind of, you know, coalesce our notes here. And that'll give some direction to the professional staff to kind of come up with kind of the rest of the plan in terms of what are some specific and measurable goals or items that we're going to look at to support these, you know, to further the priorities and to be in keeping with the guiding principles. So, that's kind of the next, next part of that is to challenge the professional staff to come up with some of those. And they certainly have input from the other strategic plans that Nancy has gathered, and their own ingenuity to develop that. But I'm certainly looking forward to their, their input. And then in our next meeting, we can go through that and have our input on that, or either ask questions or have some, give them some notes on that. So, we can, you know, we can kind of hammer that out. Is there any other input in terms of the priorities and guidelines? That's, that's where, you know, we've kind of merged items three and four. But if there's any other input on these, we'd certainly like to hear it now, and then, and then I can kind of close up with, with, with number five. Okay. So, so hearing that, and we'll go to item five, the next steps in the strategic planning process. I'll meet with, with Annette and Nancy in the near term. We'll kind of hammer out what we discussed in our meeting today. Again, as I mentioned, they'll send that to the professional staff, and, and they'll kind of give us their, you know, what they, what they think are measurable areas that we can, that we can really look at. And then that will come back for our next planning meeting. Our next meeting is a regular board meeting, so it'll be the traditional setup. But the, the work-study session after that, to go back and forth with the staff over that. Once we get that kind of hammered down, then I think we'll be well on our way. We'll have a draft plan. So, which will be, which will be great, because once, once we have that, we can start tying our meetings together with that plan, so that we know that all of the steps that we're, we're taking, all the actions that we're taking in our meeting are going to be supporting, you know, one of these priorities. And that we're going to be doing it in accordance with one of these guiding principles. And, and also, we can start getting some baseline data, you know, quite, quite frankly, so that we can begin to measure progress. And then, you know, over the next year or two, we can determine, you know, where progress is being made and how quickly it's being made, and whether we need to devote resources to one area or another to, to push that forward. So, thank you, everyone, for joining us. I think we, you know, I think we accomplished quite a bit here in terms of building out our strategic plan. And, you know, we got to hear the board and their input. And again, thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll see you in, in December.
Thank you, David. I have a question. When is the next board meeting? This is Linda.
I'm not sure if Letitia's on the line. I know it's in, I think it's early December, but I forget the exact date.
It's Letitia, it's December 3rd.
Okay, December 3rd.
Okay, December 3rd. And then our next planning meeting following that is when?
They, they do not have one.
And then saying they have not decided.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't believe that we have that scheduled yet. We, you know, because of COVID, we had to cancel a couple of those meetings. And, and then there was the meeting where we didn't have quorum in October. So, we got, you know, we're a little delayed of where we wanted to be, you know, primarily due to COVID. But I think in our next meeting, you know, we, we've already set the meetings for 2021, and when those will be and where those will be. But we'll probably need to schedule in at our next meeting, some tentative work-study plan. So, so bring your calendars next time. All right. Thank you. With that, we can, we can adjourn. And again, and thank you to the, to the staff and, and media and Mr. Moya for producing this. I think it went really well. This is our first in-person slash Zoom meeting. And I think, I think it went well. So, again, thank you for all of that, you know, production and to the interpreters. And as always, they, they do great work.
You.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.